The bell is getting ready to ring. Councilmember Burdanley's out there. Paging Dr. Danley. Good, thank you. While she's talking. We're going to call to order the Douglasville City Council. City Council Regular Meeting for tonight, which is Monday, January the 13th, 2025. Our invocation will be done by the Reverend Orlando Evans, Evangelist, Evangelism and Outreach Pastor of Douglasville First United Methodist Church. After that, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Greetings, Mayor Robinson, Councilmembers and guests. Tonight, we'll draw inspiration from Isaiah 43 and 2, which tells us, "When you pass through the waters, I will be with you; and through the rivers they shall not overwhelm you. When you walk through the fire, you should not be burned, and the flames shall not consume you." As we begin a new leadership journey this year, the Holy Spirit wants to, wants us to remember that we are protected by God's presence. While this doesn't mean that we'll never face obstacles, challenges, difficulties, or disappointments, it does mean that when we do so, we won't be defeated. So instead of fearing the waters that trouble us, the rivers that overwhelm us, or the fires that attempt to consume us, we can center ourselves in the presence of God, who positions us to prevail. Considering this, let us pray. Gracious God, thank you for being our protective resource, who holds us close during times of trouble, and lifts us up during seasons of complexity. Please continue to strengthen us so that we may never forget that our help and our hope resides in you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Evans, we appreciate that beautiful word. Thank you so much for the inspiration and the reminder to who we trust and lean on. We'll go over the protocol for the meeting, and then we'll get into the body of the meeting. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Voting Meeting. My name's Rochelle Robinson, I'm mayor of the city of Douglasville. This is a City Council Regular Meeting of Agenda Items, where the official action will be taken tonight on the items that were discussed last Thursday at the Legislative Work Session. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Items, comments from Citizens and Delegate Section for you to discuss your concerns. I'll go over a few protocol items for the meeting this evening, and then we'll get into the body of the meeting. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the Chair. If you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result in a request to ask you to leave the premises. We ask that you would not call out individual names or have a personal attack on any group of individuals or persons by themselves. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud, react to speakers, speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation when you're at the microphone, at the podium. Please address your concerns and comments to myself or committee persons. We know that we do have a presentation tonight, so we will allow celebration for the presentation that we'll have. So it's going to be okay to cheer at that time. And we're only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings. And if you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting, so they will not be disruptive. Now, this is how the Agenda Items will be handled this evening. The Committee Chairperson will read his or her Agenda Item. Then that person representing that Agenda Item will come forward, give your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes to talk to us. But if you have a presentation, then you'll present your presentation. Myself and councilmembers will possibly ask clarifying questions. And after that, the Committee Chairperson will ask the audience, if it's a public hearing, there are 20 minutes for those in favor of the item, 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. Before you come to the podium, there are cards outside. There are speaker cards, there's a blue card. We ask that you would please put your name and address on that card. When you come forward, you hand that card to Ms. Acker, the city clerk, and then you come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. And then you have five minutes to talk to us about any business germane to the city of Douglasville. That's a whole lot of instructions. Hopefully, we're on the same page. If you have any printed materials, I ask that you please give those to Ms. Acker. She'll make copies and disseminate them to myself and councilmembers. So those are all the instructions. Now, we do have a presentation this evening. And after that, we'll go through the Agenda and vote on the items that were discussed last Thursday. This presentation is by myself and representing the City Council and the citizens. It's a letter of recognition honoring the Douglasville Tiger Cubs, because they won, I know that's right, they won the Super Bowl Tournament for Youth Recreation Football. Let's give them a hand. So I'm going to read the letter, and then I'll ask Coach Jones to come forward, and whomever else you would like to come and represent the team. And I know Director Bass is here with our Parks and Recreation Team as well. It says, "Office of the Mayor, January 13th, 2025. Dear Coach Jones, I wish to congratulate you and the Tiger Cubs on winning the Super Bowl for your 2025 youth recreation football season. The Douglasville Tiger Cubs Organization has been a fantastic partner for this community for so many years. There have been so many quality and qualified young people that have developed essential skills that they've practiced throughout their lives on the football field and taken into their futures. This win is a testament to what hard work, dedication, and working as a unified team can achieve. I pray that you all have a wonderful and well-deserved celebration. You have earned it. Again, congratulations on this accomplishment. I look forward to watching your staff continue to teach our young people these invaluable lessons. I also look forward to watching the Tiger Cubs grow into young men of strong character and great work ethic. Keep up the good work. God bless you and best wishes, Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the city of Douglasville and the Douglasville City Council." So we'll ask a representative to come forward. Director Bass, you want to talk? And then we'll have the team come and take some pictures, and have everyone come forward.
Yes, ma'am, good. Evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. We are excited to recognize the Tiger Cubs for winning yet another Super Bowl Championship.
I know, we never get tired of saying that.
That's right, that's right. They represent us well, so we definitely wanted to make sure we come out and recognize them for their great accomplishments. Mr. Jones could not be here with us today, so we do have our Vice President, Coach Warren.
All right now.
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor, how are you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
We actually put this in our schedule, as we create the schedule for the year. Because we hope to be in front of you celebrating another victory, another Super Bowl.
So you're speaking of those not as if they were in the beginning from the last year.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. So we have our 11U Blue and our 11U Gold. They actually won the Super Bowl for the Northwest Georgia Youth Football League. And we're excited. We thank you for your letter of recognition. We're excited about that. And with no further ado.
Yes, sir, we'll have councilmembers talk. Dr. Burdanley?
I just have a question, I mean, a comment. Congratulations, Coach, and to all of you. Is there a football player by the name of Aaron? Your grandmother is Gwen Redwine.
Aaron.
Aaron, I'm going, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Aaron, can you come down just for a minute? I'm not going to embarrass you too much. Hi, Aaron. Aaron was in my class when he was five. And your grandmother called me and told me exactly what you did on this team. And I just want to say, do you remember me? You don't remember me? He was five, do you remember Victoria Kids? Okay, so I remember third, fourth, fifth, many, 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 many times, Aaron, you were in my office. I was eating, drinking my tea, and drinking my tea. But I just want to say congratulations to all of you. But to Aaron, I am so proud of you for what you're doing. Can't wait to see you in the film. Thank you for letting me do that.
You never know, someone's always watching. They know someone who knows someone. So Coach, you want your players to come forward so we can take a picture?
Yes, make sure I acknowledge the head coach, Coach Tres of the 11U Gold, Coach Kurt of the 11U Blue, not sure if he's here tonight, but.
All right, the coaches, you all want to say anything? Congratulations. Golden Blue, come on, let's, give us some comments.
It is an honor to be in front of you all.
Yes, sir.
I got a group, I got, I got a great group of boys. Got a great group of boys in Douglas County. I just ask, we do right by them. You know what I'm saying? They're going to do right by y'all, just do right by them. That's all I got to say.
Thank you so much, Coach.
Hey, my name's Sean Tres, I'm the Assistant Coach for 11U Blue. And I'd just like to say that I'm glad we came out with the win. You know, we had a team that, you know, came out there and they showed their heart. And we're going to come back with 2025, the champions again, you know? And I'm proud of y'all, boys.
Oh, congratulations. I'll give the coaches a hand. And we'll have all the team players come forward and we'll give you.
Team players and coaches, and team mom.
And councilmembers, please come around.
Can I get, can I get the players on this side to come over to this side? Is it?
They need to squeeze in.
Could you? Come on, guys. Can we get the? She's not able to, she can't get them all in there. All right, can everybody see me? Because if you can see me, then that means you're in the photo. All right? Okay. Can you? Councilman, yes, Councilman has. Okay. All right, right here on the count of three. One, two, three. I'm going to take one more photo, one, two, three. And I'm going to take one more, one, two, three. One more big smiles, one, two, three. That's, was it, was it back? Okay. All right. Thank you.
It's going to go back to the regular council meeting now. All right. All right, thank you so much. As the chamber's clear, Assistant Coach did let us know that it's the 60th year that the Tiger Cubs have been playing in the city of Douglasville. So that is a longstanding history of having them in the community, impacting young, young men's lives. So that's a blessing. 60 years is a long time. So now we'll move on with the rest of the agenda. We're at item number five. It is the approval of the Minutes, I mean, of the Agenda. So I'll open the floor for a motion for adoption of the Regular Meeting Agenda for tonight, January 13th, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes, it's been properly moved and second moved by Councilman Watts and second Councilmember Estes to approve the adoption of the Regular Meeting Agenda for tonight, January 13th, 2025. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from councilmembers? If not, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the, the Regular Meeting Agenda is adopted for this evening. Now, we'll move on to the Minutes. I have a motion, I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the Minutes of December 12th, 2024, which was Legislative Work Session, and the Minutes of December 16th, 2024, Regular Meeting and Executive Session. I will open the floor for a motion to approve item 25-007.
So moved.
Thank you. I think it was a tie, Ms. Acker. Who did you get? Councilman, Councilmember Hudson or Mr.? Oh, Ms. Miller, Nicole in. Also, Councilmember Miller in made the motion, and Councilmember Estes second. Is that correct? May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Estes, second to approve the Minutes for item 25-007. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns about this item? I don't see any. Thank you. All those in favor of approving item 25-007, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-007 is unanimously approved. We'll move on to the Consent Agenda. I've opened the floor for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved and second moved by Councilmember Estes, second by Mayor Pro Tem to approve the Consent Agenda. Do we have any questions, concerns, comments? We do have a lot of reappointments, which is exciting to have these folks in the community volunteering for us. We have any concerns, corrections, deletions? No? All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I will move on then to the next committee, or next Agenda Item, which is Committee, Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on then to the next item, Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business tonight under Finance.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Housing and Community Affairs chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Housing and Community Affairs Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. We'll move on to Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business at this time under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Personnel and Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. The Personnel and Organization Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Estes. We'll move on to Planning and Development Committee, Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business for planning and development.
Thank you so much, can't believe it. Public Improvement and Beautification is also chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and we also have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you so much. Everything is in the Consent Agenda. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis. Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. We'll move on to Public Safety Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight under Public Safety.
Yes, ma'am.
And it reads as follows, "Consider a request for the alcoholic beverage license for the retail package sale of wine and malt beverage at the following establishment. Proposed licensed principal hotel group LLC DBA Hampton Inn and Suites, location 999 Bob Arnold Boulevard. Proposed agent outlet manager is Tiffany Dixon. Required fees have been paid to the Finance Department." Do we have Ms. Dixon here, or anyone here from Hampton Inn that's representing? Oh, come on up, sir, thank you. Thank you. If you'll state your name for the record.
Bippin Hira.
And your address, please.
3251 Twisted Branches Lane, Marietta, Georgia 30068.
Thank you. And we've had a public hearing on this? I don't see the public hearing listed. We did not, okay. So I can go ahead, all right. So I would like to open the floor for a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this license? Is there anyone here who would like to speak for it? If not, we've asked, I've asked all of my questions. Does anyone have any questions to ask our applicant at this time? All right, if not, I'd like to place item 25-008, and it's a motion for approval.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bur Danley. I have a motion to approve item 25-008. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved and second moved by the Chair, Councilmember Dr. Bur Danley, and second by Councilmember Estes, this is in his ward, to approve item 25-008. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Bippin? The applicant. I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-008 is unanimously approved.
Thank you so much, and congratulations on your license, and we hope that Ms. Tiffany feels better.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the City Council, along with the city officials as well, for assisting me in getting this approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Madam Mayor, we have no other items under public safety tonight.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We'll move on to Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question. Was this on the agenda the other night?
Yes.
Okay, I thought I had moved it over to consent agendas, so I just want to make sure it wasn't a different item.
I'm sorry, are you speaking of public safety?
What's that now?
Which item?
Oh, you know what?
Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Madam Mayor, we have no business tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
That's okay. It's the beginning of the year, we all good. Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. We'll move on to Technology Committee. I know we had some technology training before the meeting, and that's chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Our last committee is Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Bur Danley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no items tonight under transportation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Other business announcement from myself, Mayor of the city of Douglasville, for the committee chairs and committee memberships for 2025. I did hear from a couple of councilmembers, but I have elected to keep the committees the same. I believe that we're doing well with the committees where they are with the chairs, vice chair, and committee chairperson. So if it isn't broke, we're not going to try to fix it. So we're going to keep the committees the same. But I will open the floor for a motion for Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have a motion from the floor?
I would like to nominate Terry Miller to continue as Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. Do we have any other nominees or any other persons for Mayor Pro Tem? Okay, well, I will close nominations. All those in favor of voting for Councilmember Terry Miller, who is the current Mayor Pro Tem, to stay Mayor Pro Tem, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. You are unanimously elected by your colleagues and peers to remain the Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, have done a fabulous job. In fact, this past Thursday, when I was stuck on the highway trying to come home from dropping my daughter off at college, he didn't know he was going to have to stand in the first meeting of the year, but you did a wonderful job. So thank you so much. The citizens are in great hands as a backup if anything happens to me. So thank you, and congratulations for being elected again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. So now we'll move on. Any other business from councilmembers that we want to bring forward to the floor? Thank you. I'll just ask everyone to continue to pray for people in California. We do have friends there, and it's very devastating in Pasadena and surrounding areas of what's going on there. And we thank publicly again, Mr. Roberts, for the work that the city and his staff in Public Works did to keep us safe and to clear the streets and roads so that we're able to drive on them. We appreciate all the hard work. I know it was a lot of overtime where everyone else was home sleeping. You were out there working. I did get a comment from former City Councilmember Beth Johnson. She wanted to say thank you so much. She said she knows that you stayed up all night to make certain things were done well, and that your commitment shows. So she texted me to tell the city that we're doing a great job and to thank you in particular, Mr. Roberts. So now we'll move on to updates from our city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. Thank you, sir. Our staff attorney, welcome back, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
Thank you.
Where's the baby?
I almost brought her with me tonight. Maybe not by choice.
Welcome back. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Our police department, Major Stafford.
We have no business tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, and thank you for what you do to keep us safe as well. Yes, sir. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
I'll see you guys again on Thursday.
Yes, ma'am. I know we have, our schedule has been adjusted for Martin Luther King and the beginning of the year, though we do have council meetings back to back this week. So you don't have anything else? All right, thank you so much. Comments from citizens and delegates, if we have anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and give any comments, you have five minutes to talk to us about any business germane to the city of Douglasville. I don't see anyone. If we don't have any other business to take care of this evening, then this meeting is adjourned.